Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, May tenth, 2021. We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Next item is approval of minutes from April twenty-six, 2021. Could I have a motion for approval?
I'll move approval of the minutes from April twenty-six, 2021.
A second. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna give that one to James. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any corrections?
You just said you were giving it to James.
I'm sorry. I did say that and I wrote Sharice. All right, like I said, it's been a very long day. Uh, any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next section on the agenda are presentations and public input. First on the, uh, under this item are the, training sessions that we have on the Tax Increment Financing District, and Stephanie McMahon will be presenting that information.
Good evening. I'm Steph McMahon, the Economic Development Supervisor. I'm gonna share my screen so you can see our presentation. And, hang on one second. Okay. Today I want to give you an overview of how TIF works, and then I'll have, hopefully have a little time for questions at the end, if you have any. Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, is a redevelopment tool that cities use to encourage and support the improvement of blighted areas that might not otherwise be appealing to developers. Projects that request and are granted TIF funds wouldn't happen but for the TIF benefits offered by the city. TIF districts are geographic areas that are defined by the city when the TIF is created. A TIF is a joint investment by all taxing bodies, and in order for a TIF to exist, it's important to have the support of any taxing, participating taxing bodies. Members of the taxing bodies make up the Joint Review Board that meets annually to review the performance of the TIF that is administered by the city. Property taxes from new development are used as the incentive. The new development creates an increase in the assessed value of the property, and the difference between the old or original taxes and the new taxes after the development project are what is called the TIF increment. So Will Kachowski created some, these graphics in this PowerPoint for me. So we're going to walk through how a successful TIF would look over its life of twenty-three years. And so he set up where this would be the pre-assessed value of the TIF, and we will go into what each of these areas of the graph looks like slide by side, slide. Prior to a TIF being created, the city identifies an economically depressed area that has physical and economic deficiencies, and the city then determines that private investment in the area is not likely to occur at a reasonable rate if no public investment is forthcoming. So this is where we have the pre-TIF assessed value of that geographic area. And the area where a community wants to create a TIF must meet the blighted conditions specified by Illinois law. Once the boundaries of the area are determined, the city makes a plan for improving the area through development. A joint review board comprised of members of each of the participating taxing bodies is formed. The next step is a public hearing, after which the municipality passes an ordinance approving the creation of a TIF. The county clerk certifies the total equalized assessed valuation of the property in the TIF as of the date the TIF district was established. This serves as the baseline when determining the increment, the difference between the old and the new assessed values. The baseline is also the value used to calculate the taxes that will continue to go into the taxing, go to the taxing bodies throughout the life of the TIF. So the taxing bodies don't lose taxes because of TIF, and if all goes as planned, each will realize increased tax distributions at the end of the TIF when the assessed value of the area has been increased. So this slide is just to demonstrate that in that base value of the TIF, all of our taxing bodies are in there and how they are percentage out to share that base value at the amount that is available. Slide eight shows the increase in assessed value generated by development. The tax increment from that increase is used by the city to promote redevelopment that wouldn't have occurred again but for the creation of the TIF. So for the life of the TIF, the city is the temporary custodian of that increment and should use the funds generated to promote new development and upgrade infrastructure to support that new development. TIF eligible costs, those expenses that may be legally paid for out of TIF, include the items listed on this slide such as land acquisition and prep, rehabilitation of public or private buildings, construction of public works improvements, studies, plans, professional services, marketing of the TIF area, and even TIF administration. TIF eligible expenses for a specific development include such costs as demolition of a building in a poor condition, purchasing adjacent land to create a better site, creating architectural drawings and engineering plans. In a redevelopment agreement for a project, the city may reimburse the developer directly for some eligible costs or rebate a percentage of taxes generated in future years. In some cases, the city could even choose to issue bonds secured by the incremental taxes the improvement would generate. After twenty-three years, the TIF may come to an end, in which case any unused funds are distributed as surplus back to all taxing bodies, which is what just happened recently with the city of Urbana's TIF one. A TIF may be closed early if all of the goals for the area have been met, and it may also be extended for an additional ten years if there is more work to be done. The graph in slide twelve visually represents the increase that each taxing body will receive after the closing of a successful TIF. You can see that the assessed value of the whole TIF has increased because of redevelopment and improvements, raising the tax base to a higher level. This slide represents what would happen if there never were a TIF. In that case, it's unlikely that the blighted area would realize growth without the incentive of a TIF, and even more likely that the base assessed value would continue to decline as infrastructure continued to crumble. Here are some frequently asked questions about TIF. Do tips harm schools? No, they shouldn't harm the schools, and our schools participate as taxing bodies in our TIF districts. Do local governments use, lose taxes? No. Again, they shouldn't because develop, redevelopment agreements happen because of the but for TIF to help with the development to increase the tax base, not raise taxes. In regards to historic preservation, there are eligible expenses for provisions to, but there are restrictions to use TIF funds to demolish historic resources when alternatives exist. What about enterprise zones? You'll see on our TIF maps that in some cases our enterprise zone map and our TIF maps overlap each other, and that's okay. However, we can't do property tax rebates from the enterprise zone when it's also in the TIF. So in that case, the TIF takes precedence and, though we can't abate those property taxes, we could rebate money through the TIF instead of the enterprise zone. So there are some rules we have to follow when that happens. Can the city move money between the TIFs? Yes, we can. If the TIF's borders are touching or contiguous, money can be moved between them. And to learn more about TIF, we have a lot of information on our city's website. There's a lot of information online. We hold an annual TIF Joint Review Board meeting, and I'm always available for questions along with other city staff. An overview of Urbana's TIFs. Here is a picture of our TIF maps, which are also available on our website. This orange or peachy section is TIF two. The, um, the reddish area is our central TIF, and the purplish-pinkish is TIF four, which starts near the downtown but continues on on this map to the right up to, up through Cunningham Avenue. TIF two is gonna expire at the end of 2022, and it's already been extended once, and we've accomplished a lot of our goals in, um, TIF two. So the increment for fiscal year 2020 and TIF two was 1.2 million dollars, and some of the projects that TIF helped in this area was Five Points, Schnucks, Stratford Apartments, and, and the Boneyard, which is now located in Central TIF. TIF four expires in 2025, but we would have the option to extend that TIF if we wanted to work on that as a goal. And the increment for that TIF right now for 2020 was nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and some projects that have happened in TIF four include Napleton's Auto Park, Creative Thermal Solutions, the Hamford Inn, which was redeveloped into JX Enterprises, the Airport Road Reconstruction. And finally, the Central TIF, which encompasses all of our downtown, is a newer TIF. So it's a young TIF and doesn't have as much money, but it's not due to expire until 2040. The increment for fiscal year 2020 was a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Some projects that, there are redevelopment agreements on, are 200 Vine Street. Those are the townhomes going in right next to the city building. Excuse me, the new Landmark Hotel, the Broadway, and Broadway Food Hall. So, and as you can see here from the notes, some Central TIF projects have been supported by funds that were transferred from TIF two because they're contiguous. We can do that. So I know that was a lot of information very quick, and TIF is complicated. I am by no way an expert, but I will do my best to answer any questions if you have them or get you answers.
Questions for Steph. Sharice?
Please. Yes, um, cuz we're talking about TIFs. So you know how I have been pushing for a grocery store here on the, in Ward Three? Um, is there a TIF that would cover or would, would it, would even that kind of business qualify for a TIF?
Yes, the business it would, would, there are costs for new construction that aren't eligible for TIF, but then there are costs as far as, like I said, land acquisition or planning. So we would have to look at each situation and what was being redeveloped on the, whatever land was chosen and make sure it was within a TIF district, but absolutely.
Okay.
Other questions? Jay?
Um, I have a couple of questions from the businesses side. So the first being the, the list that we have of types of expenses for development, is that an extensive list? Are there other things that are not covered? I've been poking around on the website, but I think I might have missed it if there are additional things.
Sure, we have to follow the TIF law and what is eligible. So usually, the general rule is it has to be attached to the building or the land. But if, usually if there's a question, I have people, you know, let me know, and then if I was uncertain based on the TIF law, which is a very long page document, we would check with our TIF lawyers to see, make sure it was eligible or not.
Okay, and then kind of related to that, if an application comes in from a business that's in a TIF designated area, are they automatically eligible or what is that? I know that obviously there's a voting process, but is, is that kind of the baseline?
Well, it depends on the size of the project. We have some small grants that are TIF-funded grants called Business Development and Business Opening Grants, and those are for new businesses or expanding businesses. And that's kind of set up to be an automatic process because they're, they're smaller grants, so we don't have to bring those to you. And then we have a, a standard program called a TIF Redevelopment Incentive Program. We call that the TIF RIP. And that's a basic application with scoring criteria. And again, those projects come through me and I, based on the scoring, we would give them agreement where they could receive between zero and twenty percent reimbursement on their eligible costs. So those type of projects are usually smaller in nature, less than five hundred thousand dollars investment by the business. When they start getting bigger, over five hundred thousand is when we might want to consider a redevelopment agreement, like I'll be bringing to you later in this meeting to set, to ask for the business or the business is asking for more funds than either of those kind of set programs could do. So that'll be your decision whether to go into a redevelopment agreement with them or not.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You have Grace and James, I have their answer.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, James.
Grace was before me.
Please, get a few, you go first.
So, um, my first question is, I noticed language about protecting school districts. I'd like to know a little more specific about how the Illinois law or the Illinois way of doing this allows school districts to be protected.
Well, there are, um, if there, you, the city can't enter into intergovernmental agreements with the school. So, you know, the school gets the same base tax rate as when the TIF was created. There are such things as make whole agreements and that type of thing that the school district can enter into where if they have eligible projects that are, like, expanding onto the school or have TIF eligible expenses, they could come to the city for, to be reimbursed for that type of thing.
But there's no option for them to opt out under the Illinois?
Well, when the TIF was created, the city goes, talks to each of those taxing bodies to see who will participate. So I believe back when the TIF was created in Urbana, they would have got, talked to the school and gotten their agreement to be part of the participating program with the TIF, so.
Can it, can it go forward if some taxing bodies don't agree to it?
Um, I know there has to be some legislative help in, in that creation, but you definitely want to have the support of the taxing bodies in creating a TIF or extending a TIF for the, for the most success.
All right, and, and for those, um, programs where there's a scoring criteria for eligibility, are, is any of the criteria directed towards minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses?
Uh, yes, definitely on the, um, on the Business Development Opening Grants, we have two levels of business, one's eligible and one's priority. Minority-owned businesses are priority, so they would get higher consideration.
Thank you.
Grace?
Okay, I have four burning questions, and I think they're quick, and if not, feel free to just point me to the information.
Okay.
Um, number one is where slash is, if our TIF spending is recorded and advertised anywhere, like publicized?
Uh, the, the Joint Review Board is a public meeting that our, our participating taxing bodies participate in, but anyone can. It's open to the public and is, um, an annual meeting. And then the TIF totals would be in your budget, and planned budget spending would also be, the TIF counts would be in your budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, and do you have an idea of kind of what percentage of the property taxes are going towards TIF? Like, it looked like Cunningham Four, there was about two-thirds of the current property taxes were expected to be going to TIF, and the, the base assessed value is about a third of the property taxes. Is that correct?
I don't have it right off the top of my head, but I can get that information for you.
Okay, thanks. Number three was, do you have, I was wondering, what's the system for defining but for with the TIF? How do you, um, correlate? How do you, you know, find the causation between the correlation of businesses and property tax increase?
Um, the business should really be coming to us saying, but for the help from TIF, we will not be able to do this project in our community. So that is, it's not really, um, something, it's more of a conversation that happens. So we do run numbers. Will does that for the city and helps me out running statistics based on the, how much investment is going in, how much TIF increment will be generated, and if we're to enter into an agreement, how much the city would contribute, contribute from TIF. And we also take into consideration, of course, you know, jobs created. Is it something the city really need? So all of that kind of goes into the statistical analysis that, uh, that we can share with you on projects. And so we can see what the return will be to the city.
Thank you. And last question was wondering about after the TIF ends, like, say, the next year after it ends, does the tax body just go back to its usual split with the new property taxes?
Well, when it ends, we have to make sure all obligations are paid out first. So even though TIF two ends in 2022, that doesn't, if there are obligations that have been promised, we have to wait till all of those are paid out, and then what's ever left of the remaining TIF gets split through, with the taxing bodies based on their percentages. And then that increased assessed value would then raise their tax base for that TIF area when it's done.
And then for the previous years after that, it would be just a regular tax split, like there was no TIF, right?
Exactly, yes, but it would be at that higher tax base. Yep.
Thank you. Got through all four of them. Thanks.
Oh, great, thanks. I'll get you that answer on the percentage of, what percentage of the property taxes goes to TIF.
Chandra?
Hi, Stephanie. Quick question. What happens if a TIF, if the deliverables aren't met from a TIF? What happens then to either that, that business, that TIF district or whatever?
Um, if it's a business we have a redevelopment agreement with and they didn't meet the criteria of the TIF, the city has the option of, um, you know, contacting them if they're in breach of contract because a TIF redevelopment agreement is a contract. So we would have to pursue that and have conversation about how they, if they haven't met the guidelines that were set in the agreement, then we could terminate, terminate that contract.
Further questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. Okay, we'll now move on to public input. I, um, I wanted to recognize Nicole Levesque, if she's on. She was representing Cracker Barrel and wanted an opportunity to speak. I don't see her among the attendees. Jason, did you admit her already? No.
I did not. She was on earlier, but I don't see her now, um, either. So she might have left. If I, if I see her back, I'll be sure to point her out.
Alrighty. Um, okay, we'll move on then to Tracy Chong.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong. Tonight I'm following up on the CPRB taser review, and would like to know if any of you watched the taser footage where the officer was running among civilians, including running past a baby in a stroller, holding one gun in each hand, and even switching back and forth between hands. We have seen how Dante Wright murdered by a police officer who mistakenly used a gun instead of a taser. This fatal incident was the first time and was not the first time an officer has shot the suspect with a handgun instead of firing a taser. So that's why UPD taser policy under known uncertain terms says that officers should not hold both a firearm and the taser at the same time. However, what we saw is that we have an officer running, chasing, shouting, actually shouting very frantically while wielding both the firearm and taser gun, and even switching hands. Taser in the right hand, and then we see the taser in the left hand. And Deputy Chief Salz even low-key admitted that it was misconduct by the officer. However, based on Salz's report to CPRV, UPD's internal review found that there was no misconduct. There was no improper use of the taser. So how is there no misconduct when the UPD policy, let me read it again. Officers should not hold both a firearm and the taser at the same time. We should really look into how PD, how UPD addressed this issue, how such a dangerous action by a UPD officer could be overlooked. It reminds me of when Officer Raff had his rifle set to fire while it was swinging hazardly while he was beating a Leo Lewis, endangering himself, her, his fellow officers, and the public. But yet UPD internal review found no misconduct, and just concerned civilians took it upon themselves to investigate on behalf of the public. How many of these incidents, dangerous incidents have happened? From the glimpses we get from the selective footage shown, UPD officers seem to engage in reckless actions, rash decisions, and excessive force that endanger public safety without consequence. We see UPD leadership trivializing and minimizing these dangerous actions. Do we really want to wait until someone gets badly injured or killed before taking action? Um, next, I would like to respond to Mayor Marlin's response to my comment about censorship on the Imagine Urbana website. According to Mayor Marlin, my statement about the city censoring comments was wrong because it was bang the table, a company hired by the city doing the, doing the censorship, not the city itself. I don't know what to say except that it is such a ridiculous response, trying to wash your hands off doing the dirty work. If you hire someone to do something that you yourself don't want to do, of course you are responsible for that decision. If you purposely hire a company with extreme censorship criteria, of course you are responsible for the censorship. And for the record, this was what my second comment was. I wrote, um, there was no unnamed, there was no identifying information. The only thing was that was critical. I bet if I said UPD officers are awesome, that comment would have just flown through. Okay, so this is what I said. I pinned the location and said, this is where a banner police officers attacked an unarmed, innocent, twenty-one-year-old African-American woman on April tenth, twenty-twenty. She was pinned down by three police officers, punched in the head and knee in the ribs. My concern is up to today, none of the police officers have been held accountable for their actions. Urbana leadership and Urbana police leadership have not apologized or acknowledged the damage done to the innocent woman. This comment was censored. And the city claims, Mayor Marlin claims, is not the city who's doing the censorship, even though the city hired the company knowing what the censorship criteria was and definitely paid for it. Thank you.
Uh, next up is Minnie Pearson, President of the NAACP.
Thank you for recognizing, uh, thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. My questions have been answered, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Uh, hi there. Can you hear me? I'm on a different device.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, I'm dual-wielding meetings at the moment, so I'm just on to clarify a remark that I had made. Arkansas and Texas have a lower per capita COVID caseload than Illinois. That's what I had intended to say. I accidentally said higher in my public comment earlier. So just to recap those dynamics, the state of Illinois, while the situation is improving, is far behind Republican-led states, including Arkansas, the worst state in the country for renters, because they don't even require habitability for landlords to still be legally entitled to rent. That is to say, they can rent out a property that is completely unlivable, infested, no utility service, and they have a lower caseload than us in large part because they have a utility shut-off moratorium. And on top of that, the protections that we have in place right now with UDAP and with the potential appropriation of $1.4 billion from HB 2877, it's not going to be enough. This is something that media sources have said to me as well. I'm not going to scoop their reporting beyond saying that. And so I just want that to be understood. I had misspoken. Texas and Arkansas have a lower per capita COVID caseload rate than Illinois. And they are, I think, two of, the only two Republican-led states with utility shut-off moratorium. Anyway, have a good evening.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Edgar County Board? Reading Edgar Garrett's name. The champagne, or good grief, Urbana City Council. I've been, I've been in too many meetings today, I can tell you that.
I think Sarah Nixon has her hand up.
Okay, Sarah Nixon.
This is Sarah Nixon. Good evening, City Council. A status update on the One Door Pilot Project is long overdue. The city announced the program in August 2020 as a major measure to reform how it responds to mental health crisis calls. The public was told that the One Door Program would introduce a brand-new team dedicated to mental health issues. And according to the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement passed by City Council on December 2nd, 2020, the program was due to commence January 1st, 2021, with the terms of the agreement stating its expiration on December 31st, 2021. Mayor Marlin and the Urbana Police Department told us that the One Door Program will be based in the CU at Home headquarters. We were told in August that an architect is working on plans and a contractor will begin work soon at CU at Home's building on Washington Street in Champaign. And we're told to anticipate completion by early 2021. Despite major public opposition and outcry, the city authorized massive spending from the Urbana taxpayers' coffers, committing millions of dollars to CU at Home. The proposal authored solely by the Urbana Police Department estimated the One Door Program would cost up to $2.1 million in the first year of operation, another million in 2021, and $2.2 million each subsequent year. Joel Sanders told us that CU at Home will manage the program and Rosecrans will manage the crisis response team. In December, you voted to hand out $80,000 to Rosecrans to hire a program director for One Door. But guess what? Here we are, it's mid-May 2021, and there is no sign of this program. The public has been left hanging, completely in the dark about what's going on. And all appearances point to nothing at all going on. You can look in vain at the Rosecrans, on the Rosecrans website for any mention of One Door and for any word on what they are doing with our $80,000. There appears to be nothing at all about the One Door Program on the CU at Home website. And now Fox Illinois reports today that CU at Home is shutting its doors and operations and programs are being temporarily paused. We've even just gotten confirmation of this at the Cunningham Township meeting. So CU at Home is incapable of providing even basic services. Nobody knows where it stands and community agencies are scrambling to step in to fill the void. Urbana promised its residents reform in policing, promised its residents a functional alternative to policing in mental health crisis situations, promised as a priority building stronger relationships and community trust. But instead, we have chaos, failure, and no evidence of any real follow-through on those promises. Urbana also committed to a timeline, to partnerships, and to big budgets. And what of these promises? None have been fulfilled, except the one where tax funds have been funneled to recipients, handpicked by the Urbana Police Department, an agency that is sliding further and further down a dark path of error, misjudgment, and misconduct and cover-up. And that takes me, City Council, to my second and last point. The appointment of Sergeant James Corey Coker to Lieutenant at the UPD is a disgrace. No one in local politics can fail to be aware that James Corey Coker helped batter Urbana Police brutality victim Ali Lewis, and it was he that insulted and humiliated her with the taunt, act like a lady. Coker was the most senior officer on the scene that day, and his promotion to Lieutenant sends a clear message to Urbana and to the officers who must serve under his direction. Not only has he not been held accountable for his actions, but he's been protected and rewarded, awarded a major promotion. This is a city government that does not listen to its residents and protects and promotes bad apples. The rest of the barrel with their toxic and dangerous attitude and conduct.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council?
Looks like, yeah.
Drake Matarri.
Drake Matier, hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Drake Matier. Recent graduate of the University of Illinois. But I have accepted the Masters of Public Health program, so you all have to deal with me for two more years. So here we are. But I would just like to echo the words of Sarah Nixon, as she perfectly described many of the concerns of the people, especially the concerns of the individuals, the comrades, the activists who have actively been in the streets since May of 2020, feeding the people, being there for the people, directing people to the resources, directing mothers who are taking care of children, who have lost children. We are concerned that defunding, defunding the police has led to a co-op, has led to a co-opting of the movement. And this is why we move from defund the police to abolish the police and to depowering the police. And it is also a part of the conversation now to abolish and dismantle capitalism as well and dismantle imperialism and colonialism. And so I hope, I hope, Urbana, the city that has, you know, that aura about them that they're a little bit more left-leaning than Champaign, that they're a little bit more liberal. Well, maybe liberal isn't the right term because Biden is a liberal. He increased the defense budget and is spreading Chinese propaganda. But I digress. I would hope that the officers who are giving money to specific individuals, I hope, I hope, I hope, I hope, and I say this as sarcastically as I can be, as sarcastic as I can be. I hope that this is not the case. That is just not a disappearance of, as Bush said, the weapons of mass disappearance. This defunding of mass money, disappearance of money is not going to just the pocket of white folks and rich white folks in hot places, even though, again, I speak sarcastically, so I know that it is. Let's work to actively create new structures that are controlled by the community and the members of that community and pay and invest in the people of the community to be there for the people of the community because the people in the community have been there for the community since 1619, since 1492. The people have been there for the people from the jump. We protect us, we save us. It has not been the other way around. You can't save the people if you enslave them. You cannot save the people if you colonize them. You cannot save the people if you are actively committing genocide against them. The only way you can save someone is if you redistribute all the wealth, give up your hot places, give up your salaries, and fight against the systems, not just the people, individuals. I could care less about Donald Trump. I could care less about specific individuals, talking about the structure. Now we're talking about, let me move to Urbana Police. You, we have to, you all have to destroy, not destroy, dismantle the systems, the structures and systems of oppression. And we must create new structures and systems of rehabilitation and transformative justice. For my last 30 seconds, I will speak on a specific officer who I had an engagement with. I, hold on, I am looking for his card right now. It is Sergeant McKinney. I think I heard his name, maybe tonight, I'm not sure. Sergeant McKinney, 472. I saw you back in, I believe, March when your officers were restraining a homeless man. And I asked the brother, the brother, had he eaten, where does he live? And you all, I had to wait 30 minutes before the ambulance arrived. I would like to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, don't see any hands. Thanks, Mary Alice, for helping. Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Does any council member wish to respond? Or do you have anything you wanted to share with the public? You have up to three minutes. Grace.
I'll go first, okay, unless you want to. Okay. Just wanted to say that I, you know, hear the public input and take that seriously. I did watch that CPRB last meeting and the footage and was very disturbed and upset by that and absolutely have plans to follow up at our next meeting, committee of the whole with a discussion item with CPRB. Still a learning curve for me as a new person, but definitely something to address for sure and that I want to talk about and hear more. Also hearing things about utility shut-offs. It's my understanding in the township meeting that there is some assistance through Cunningham Township for the whole county for utility assistance. So something that we were told to point people in that direction. I would also love an update on the One Door Program. And I was also definitely concerned about police interactions with homeless individuals, especially with CU at Home's limited services and limited housing. Now, I'm concerned that we know that there are going to be an expected increase in number of people who are going to be forced to be on the streets. And I do have concerns about how our community law enforcement, particularly in Urbana, handles that kind of situation and definitely have some concerns about that. And for anyone else, please feel free to reach out to me individually as a councilperson, geewilken@urbanaillinois.us. Thank you.
I believe Jaya. And then Shandra.
Thank you. Also wanted to confirm that I have watched that CPRB meeting, the one that was discussing the taser review. I appreciate folks bringing to council's attention additional meetings that they would like us to prioritize watching. I know a number of us have been attending to those meetings as well. Kind of related to another meeting, I wanted to thank Kat Trotter for following up on the question from a plan commission meeting about noise and litter. And there is some information for residents who have any concerns related to the proposed development and other construction that's happening in terms of how to address that, both directly through the folks who are doing that building, but also contact information related to litter and excessive noise as nuisances that are prohibited by the city code. So public works can contact 217-384-2342 or a complaint can be lodged through Citizens Voice at http://www.urbanaillinois.us/citizens-voice for folks who may want to submit a complaint. So I appreciate that follow-up. I also had a question about what was happening with the One Door Program and was informed that that money has not been released because the agreement wasn't honored. So I just wanted to let folks know that that money from the city has not gone towards that program since it is not happening at this time.
Shandra.
I guess we all sort of had the same comments about CPRB as well as the One Door Program. I would be very interested in possibly putting the One Door Program on the agenda at the next committee meeting because I have sat in some, some other meetings about a new program that they're trying to bring to the community. And, and I'm curious as to the role Urbana, to see if Urbana will play in that. So perhaps that's in a discussion item we can have soon. Thank you.
I can, I can, I can, I don't see any other hands up. I can give you some.
Diane, I just want, I just want to say one quick thing. Yeah, thanks for bringing up the CAT's information on the plan commission. I noticed that somebody had said that there is construction starting at 6:00 AM and by ordinance in the city of Urbana, construction cannot start before 7:00 AM. And that has happened in my area. So I've called and left a notice and they directly contacted the contractors to make sure that they didn't start until 7:00. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, couple of things about One Door. First of all, no money has been transferred from the city of Urbana to any other agency. Last summer, we brought a concept to the City Council for One Door, which was a collab, would have been a collaboration between the city of Urbana, Rosecrans, CU at Home for really a very comprehensive wraparound response, emergency response program. As time progressed last year, and we did give some informal updates to the City Council, people may not have heard. The, the, for various reasons that related to potential partners, oh, and Carl, Carl Hospital was the fourth partner in there. The program or the plan did not progress. At this point and for the last several months, the city has been in discussion with the city of Champaign to jointly develop a co-responder emergency response program, a scaled-back version of One Door. It's something more doable. It's, I view it as a first step, a significant step in an alternative response to to crises, but it won't be as complicated or as comprehensive as the One Door was envisioned to be. And it's, I think that's significant and something that it's doable and simpler to implement as a first step. So that's where we are. There's continuing, actually, there's meetings this week with, with Champaign and some, and with Champaign, as far as I know. And we hope to bring a proposal to the City Council soon. I don't have a date for that, but in response to the, some of the comments that were made earlier, we're not spending millions of dollars at this point. No money has been transferred. And when we do get to the point of a program like this, you will be, it will be brought to City Council. We are not ready yet to give a, an update next week, however. We're not, we don't have, it's not that far along. Okay, any other council comments? Okay, we'll move on to additions to the agenda. There are none. Unfinished business, there is none. Reports of standing committees, Mary Alice.
All right, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I've moved approval for resolution number 2021-0502020R, resolution accepting a grant from the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois for tree planting.
There is second. Second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Mary Alice.
I had an inquiry from a neighborhood person asking about, I think that the estimated cost for planting a tree was approximately $495. And they were suggesting that you can get this at a lower amount. So I'm wondering if we have to pay for prevailing wage?
No, what we're paying for, and I had that very same question. What we're paying for is the cost of the tree plus the cost of hiring an outside contractor to plant it. And that will also include a one-year warranty. So typically when trees are done in-house, and I know when somebody wants to donate a tree to honor someone's memory, I believe the cost to the public was 125. That was the cost of the tree alone. It didn't include labor to plant it or some of the other things. That 200 trees is an estimate and actually we'll probably get more trees planted for that amount. But that was.
Will that go out for bid?
Pardon?
Will that go out for bid?
I, I'd have to follow up on that one. As far as who's, who actually gets that contract, there aren't a whole, well, there are choices, but I'll follow up on that one. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, will the clerk please call her own?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
That motion passes. Mary Alice.
Right, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I believe there was no recommendation for this one. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move approval of it, although I'm gonna also suggest some amendments. So I move approval for resolution number twenty twenty one zero five zero two one R. Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for animal impoundment, impoundment services.
Seconded by James and Carol had some updates and also answers to the questions that were raised last week.
Yes, and Matt Bain is here, Lieutenant Matt Bain is here to help me as well. So first, let me say there's, there was a few items that we included in a memo based on the questions that we heard last week. And, and Lieutenant Bain will follow up on the answer regarding spay and neuter because we had an individual follow up on what I had reported in the memo, which is what had been reported to me. And Matt did some follow up and so he can explain that more thoroughly. I, I hope that the, the explanation of the role of city legal in releasing a hold order was clear. And then there was a question about what is our plan in the event that there's a large number of animals that we have to accommodate? And we exceed the capacity of the, of the, the county to, to handle it. And, and what I tried to explain is that those situations are quite infrequent. And, and we have a fair amount of control over whether we, you know, whether, whether, whether we would trigger such an event so that we wouldn't do it until we were prepared to accommodate the animals. But to take the time now to try to see, to secure that, it, when people wouldn't know whether they could make that commitment, you know, whether a given humane society or vet, because they don't know what their capacity is going to be at this time of this unknown event, would be a lot of staff time spent preparing for something that's very unlikely to happen. So we can talk about that further if you want. But I, I also want to say, before I let Lieutenant Bain answer the question about the spay and neuter costs, is, you know, we've gotten some suggestions about wordsmithing and, and Mary Alice sort of suggested that she may have a few of her own. And I wanted to give you a sense of the back and forth on this. So I, I think I explained that there was, this had gotten lost between legal and the police department and getting it to council. And if you recall, the county executive had signed this back, I think in September of twenty twenty. So it, it was a few months ago that we had discovered this. And being aware of the fact that there had been the mistaken euthanization of a dog that, whose owner had been identified of, in December of twenty twenty. And, and Lieutenant Bain and I reviewing the agreement and, and thinking, well, we would like to make a few changes as well. We approached the county about, about making changes and they're reluctant to do that. And, and so let, let me, let me say why. As you, as I explained last week, they provide this service to a lot of jurisdictions in Champaign County. And they have agreements with the exact same language. They've taken this agreement to the county board. And this is the agreement that they would, that they're seeking to have signed. That being said, they have a task force that they have, or a working group, I'm not sure exactly what they call it, that's working on amendments. So that, that a variety of, of, of concerns can be satisfied. And I think rather than piecemealing a, a number of amendments that might crop up. And, and again, you know, we're inadvertently behind. They, they had wanted to get us under this new arrangement back in September. I don't, I, it, I think if we press, and I'm, I'm fairly confident that if we press, we will be without an agreement. Because when we were moving kind of slowly, trying to get them to go along with making some amendments, they issued us a ninety day notice to terminate. So, and, and I, and I, and I don't, I don't mean that there's this, you know, adversarial relationship, but they're, they want us to get off the dime. And that is their, and that is their leverage to do it. So we will be left without their services if we can't pragmatically see our way to signing this particular agreement, knowing that changes are coming. So with that, I'm going to ask Lieutenant Bain to explain the issue about the cost of spay and neuter.
Good evening. So there was a question from resident about the spaying and neutering. And we gave them an answer that apparently came across as a little bit disingenuous. It was portrayed that the, the cost of the spaying and neutering that, or that the county animal control would generally have taken upon themselves, as was pointed out, is not in this current IGA. The reason for that is simply cost. They were doing lots of animals and it was costing them quite a bit of money. The point, let's see. It was, I don't know, I guess suggested that there's going to be an additional charge of an adopting person for a dog or a cat when they're transferred to the Champaign County Humane Society. That's necessarily not the case. They don't get an additional charge. They pay an adoption fee from, or that the humane society, Champaign County Humane Society charges. And all of the costs are included with that. Whether the animal is spayed or neutered there, or it's already done, it's just one flat cost. So there's not an additional cost when an animal goes from the Champaign County Animal Control to the Champaign County Humane Society and adopter does not get any other cost. So I, if that was suggested, that's not what was meant to come across.
Sharice.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, so you're saying that when someone adopts a, an animal, that whatever, that if, if that animal needs to be neutered or spayed, then they only play, they, they still only pay a flat fee of adoption cost?
From the Champaign County Humane Society, yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, so.
If it goes to, if it went to another entity like a, a cat rescue or something like that, I don't, I can't speak for them because I have not spoken to each one that is utilized by county animal control.
Okay, so, okay, scenario. If, um, if I go to adopt a, a two month, a four month old puppy, and it's a hundred dollars for me to adopt this four month old puppy, and this puppy is not spayed or neutered, I can get that puppy spayed or neutered and still, and I'm only paying a hundred dollars for the adoption cost. I don't even know what the cost is, but I'm just saying. So I don't pay any, I don't pay any additional cost to have the, the puppy spayed or neutered. This is just right there in the, it's a flat fee that's right there in the cost of adoption. That's what I'm asking.
That, that's my, from the Champaign County Humane Society, that's my understanding, but that doesn't have anything to do with this IGA.
Okay.
The, 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 the point of this IGA is that they're, the Champaign, the Champaign County Animal Control is not doing that service as much as they used to. And probably quite more, quite more infrequently than they used to.
Okay. But I wouldn't be adopting from the, from animal control anyway. I'd be adopting from either humane society, Champaign County Humane Society or some other entity, correct?
That is, that is, for the most part, that is correct. I believe county can do it. I don't know that it's a very common practice.
Okay.
Other questions? Mary Alice.
So Carol, thank you for the update. It's interesting that they've given us a ninety day notice, basically. Is, you said there was a task force at the county that was looking over this. Is there an opportunity for the city to have any voice in terms of changes that they would like to see in the agreement?
Lieutenant Bain is, is part of that group, I believe. He was on a call with them today.
All right, well, I felt like two people who wrote city council had two suggestions. One was for additional data to be available to the partners in terms of adoption, in terms of the, I can't remember the name of the tests that they give animals to figure out if they can be sent to humane society. I thought that was a really good idea and I would strongly suggest that the city should work towards language that would incorporate that. And the second one seemed to be almost a no-brainer, which was adopting what the state law says in terms of the language in the IGA. I think that makes a lot of sense to do that and not have our own language. So I would just strongly suggest the city advocate for those two changes.
All right.
We can do that. And if anyone else has other suggestions, we will funnel those to the task force, which is, which is the venue for modifying this agreement at this point.
And Mary Alice, just to add, both of those items were discussed in today's meeting.
Was there any support from the other agencies or the other cities?
Yes.
There was. And what, what is the support from the county?
It sounded, I mean, everyone was on board with that. Everybody thought that those were, were good suggestions to make to them and that there was no opposition on either one of those.
So I have my hand up for.
Sorry, I look for hands waving in the air instead of the hands in the corner of the screen. Go ahead, James.
I just want to make sure I understand how this is, has worked out. Carol, I'm just gonna repeat back what I think I heard from you. And that is that the county decided they wanted to make a change to the agreement. They, they worked on an updated language. They did this in the fall of last year. They let us know we, they wanted to do this with us. Presumably they were doing it with all their constituents if they were changing this agreement that's used all over the place. We didn't act on it immediately. It looks to me like the, the agreement is evergreen unless somebody says ninety days, we want to terminate. Is that correct?
Yes.
There's no end date on the agreement.
That's correct.
And now, because we, we did not act on it quickly and the county wants to change the language, they're going to exercise their ninety day clause as of a certain date. Is that correct?
I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to just tweak a couple of things you said. We reviewed it for legal sufficiency. We did not review it for content, you know, substantive content. So we, the word that went back was Urbana's okay with it back in, you know, late summer. Because we weren't, because it, it wasn't being vetted internally. It got, it got, it got lost in the shuffle of, of going back through the police department and then being taken forward to, being taken forward to council. And then in the intervening time, this animal was inadvertently euthanized and so that just added to it. But, but the other piece of it is that the, the county has been wanting to get all the partners on equal footing with this payment structure regarding animals in place. And from their perspective, we've been dragging our feet. And then when we came, it passed, for them, past the eleventh hour and we're asking for changes, then it's like, we don't know what's up with Urbana, but you know, you, you people just need to get serious about this and here's how we're going to get you serious about it.
And is there, did they give us notice of the ninety days?
No, that, that is the notice.
So I mean, what, what is the, the start of the ninety day clock? What date?
It was a couple of weeks ago, I think.
Okay, and, and this is basically a change to support what the county needs, not anything that Urbana asked for, right? And, and they're in the process of redeveloping their, their processes. They've got this task force working. I, I just don't quite understand why they would be in a hurry for us to get on board with that financial structure change when there's likely to be changes to the language out of, out of what the task force says. And the task force seems like it's, it's not going to drag on for months, I assume. It, it, it's working on it. Maybe, maybe it will. I don't know. It just, it just seems odd to me that this is, you know, break the glass, ring the alarm kind of situation when it's clear we're probably going to have to revisit the language in the agreement within the next six months anyway.
Well, and, and I, I, I understand and that, and everything you said is a perfectly legitimate way of articulating the, the, the facts. But just to be, not to, you know, just, just, just to say what I think is happening on their side, is they're looking for some, they, they have been absorbing costs when they've had large numbers of animals or when animals have stayed for a longer periods of time than they have anticipated. And they're looking, even in the, even in this interim period, for some protection from incurring those costs. They're, they're trying to manage their costs in a time when we're all challenged to do that. So they're like, well, that, yeah, we're all going to work towards amended language, but I don't know that it's going to be related to cost. I think it's going to be related more to practice. So in the meantime, they're looking for protection, you know, the financial protection. And so, and the things that they've asked for don't strike me as at all unreasonable because they have been incurring costs that they can't control short of the agreement. They, you know, because like when there's a hold order in place or something, you know, it's just like they're taking care of the animal until, until something, something happens or when there's this large influx, they haven't had any way of, of, you know, sort of managing that other than just taking everybody that gets, you know, all the, all the critters that get dumped on their doorstep. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't fault them for trying to get that, that financial protection while we sort through this.
So what do we, what do we expect the timeline is before we have to? If we, if we, it sounds like the only thing they're going to accept is for us to approve the agreement as it stands.
I believe that's true.
Otherwise, we're going to have to start from scratch. And it is agreement that's been in place for six years. Roughly, I think, if I notice the date when it was instantiated.
Well, that's that agreement. It's had, it had predecessor agreements, so we have a longstanding relationship with them.
Yeah, so we have to decide whether we're willing to accept some, some flaws now with an, an expectation that there's going to be some revisions coming out of the task force, taking into account some of the items. And, and Mary Alice, you said exactly the two things that I would have supported as far as changes with regard to reporting data and using the state, state statute as the, the language. I mean, that seems like where we're at, right?
Yes, and if you should decide that you are, that, that you want to press for the language now, then we may be in a situation where we have no place for the animals to be impounded. And we might have a much more expensive solution than they offer us right now. And so that, that, we're, we're taking a pragmatic view of it and we hope that you will do the same.
Thank you.
Jaya and then Sharice.
So I think first of all, it would be important to have clarification of when that ninety day notice was served, right? Because both contracts have the ninety day. I know we're looking at the twenty fifteen one because that's the one that's actually been signed by both parties. I think that it's unreasonable to ask us to compromise our ethics for cost convenience. So I, I think we need to be able to have a conversation. If we decide that this is the option, then we, we need to make that with our eyes fully open. But I think having that timeline so we know what we're looking at and see if there is any way. This is an opportunity for them to model what that potential language could look like. It doesn't have to be a detrimental or difficult thing for them. It doesn't have to be a detrimental or, or difficult thing for them. I think it would be great if we could talk to the county about, about, you know, their timeline, their needs as well. But I think that it's also important for us to know, like, what is that timeline? So we're not being asked to make a decision without all the facts.
Okay. What I wanted to say is this, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what, what I'm, what I'm understanding is this. Is that even without the intergovernmental agreement for the animal empowerment services, the county has, has continued to take on any animals that we bring in. Am I correct in assuming that, Carol?
We're under the old agreement at the present time, the, under the old fee structure.
Okay. So the main change regarding us approving, approving this contract or this agreement tonight has nothing to do with the language as far as treatment of animals and so on and so forth, as much as it has to do with there's a new payment structure or new payment agreement or fee structure, correct?
It, it allows them protections in the event of, you know, large quantities of animals coming in or animals having extended stays.
Okay. So we, we could, we could, we could agree to pay for, to take care of this tonight as far as the payment thing. And Matt, my understanding is from what you've said about the task force is that they are in the process of changing the language to reflect more about what our concerns have been anyway, correct?
Yes, we, we've been deemed, looking at their policies and procedures and making suggestions. And the two that Mary Alice brought up, and then James said were concerns of his too, we spoke about both of those today.
Okay. So they are willing to change that, that particular language regarding the, at least they appear to be willing to change that language regarding the, the animal housing and so on and so forth, spade neutering, so on and so forth, correct? Or at least that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm basically getting from what I've been hearing. And so our only task tonight is to agree or not, vote, approve or not, the fee agreement that they have put forth so that they can be properly paid as they probably should have been back in September.
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know to what extent we have incurred costs that, that would have been charged under that agreement. But yes, you know, we should have been, we should have brought it to you back in the September timeframe.
Okay. So. Okay.
So if I could just build on, you framed it out really nicely, Sharice. So I want to build on that for a second because you, you, what, what you said to me is I don't think we're gonna get the language any quicker than we would from the task force. And this gives them some protection in the meantime. So that's, that to me, what is what the situation is. This is a bridge to this amended language.
I have also spoken with the Chair of the Champaign County Board. I can assure you that board members are very concerned about some of the policies and practices at the center. And that's why they created the task force. And I urge you to let the task force do its job and help the task force do its job by, by continuing to provide suggestions for amended language to them. And in the meantime, we need this service. And it's, it's done, you know, it's done well for us to this point. And we need the service in the, in the meantime. I do expect changes to come out of that task force. And as I said, we have representatives on that task force. And in the meantime, I can tell you, we are, our staff is buried in trying to deal with homeless people and trying to get a co-responder model stood up. And I, I really want staff to be spending time on those things rather than write, rewriting an agreement that probably will be rewritten by the county in the near future. Go ahead, Sharice.
I just want, my understanding too, even according to the agreement, the, the city of Urbana and, and I'm assuming other cities that have contracts, have, has, have a contract. They, we have the right to inspect their facilities and, and, and do that anyway, right? So us, us making suggestions right now is something that's already even in the agreement. Am I, am I correct? Or did I misread someplace? Don't, don't we have the right, that right? That, okay. So this is just really about them, us honoring their services by paying them what they're, I, I just, that's the way I'm seeing it. Maybe I'm wrong.
If it makes it any, if it makes it any easier and you can build this into a motion if you, if you prefer. But, you know, we've been discussing internally, you know, we, we had talked about the fact that, you know, we're the only jurisdiction in Champaign County that has our own animal control officer. From time to time, we've explored alternative options to having animal empowerment done at the county. And, you know, if you, if you can give us some time, we would be happy to report back. And, and I don't mean 90 days of time because as the mayor said, there's a lot going on right now, but you know, maybe six months of time. We can report back on the, on the analytics of all of it and, and whether it still makes sense to do everything the way we've been doing it. And then maybe we're the ones issuing the 90 day notice that we're gonna terminate because we have a new model. We'd be happy to explore all that. We just need some time. And right now we're under the gun of this, you know, this notice to terminate. And we're just trying to, we're just trying to bridge our way through.
Yeah, because it didn't come to us in September.
Yeah. And I, and I don't, I don't know why that happened, but we, we discovered that it did. And now we're trying to put the pieces back together.
Mary Alice.
Is there any estimate in terms of when that task force will give their final recommendations? Is there any estimate of time? Are we talking two months? Are we talking a year? What, what is the timeframe?
I don't know specifically. We've met three or four times. And that's probably been over about a six week period. I, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I wouldn't see it happening in a year. I would see it happening sooner than that. Probably a few months, if not sooner. And that is just preparing those suggestions of their policies and procedures of things that have been discussed, things have been found, things that come from community input. And that's what we're going to make the suggestion to the county board to do.
And then, so the process for that is the task force takes an input, writes a report, and then the county takes into consideration that input and potentially issues an amendment proposed for the IGA? Is that the process?
That's my understanding. The task force was, my understanding is just to make suggestions to better their policies and procedures. I don't think anything that we suggest has to be done. But they asked for the task force, so I don't know why they, they wouldn't do it as long as they're, they're reasonable. And just to answer one more question, I got the termination letter on March 31st.
We're two months, almost two months into this.
Grace.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Carol and Matt, for addressing our questions since the last week. And as far as the excess animals, I do think it's really good to prepare for those things. I know that, you know, you say it's unlikely and that we could control that of excess animals. It sounds like to me you're saying that if we come across another hoarding situation, we would just leave them there until we can find placement outside of the county's capacity. And I'm not sure if it's even Urbana's extraordinary event. Could it be possible that there's a hoarder situation in Champaign that fills up the county capacity? And so then our, all of our animals have to go somewhere else. I understand that, you know, we can't work out all the details and that a lot of these facilities won't know their capacity at the time. But I think it's reasonable and not too difficult to have a tentative list, you know? I think our animal control officer who's in the field could list quite a few places off the top of their head of, you know, some rescues in the area. And just to have that kind of contact information with, here's a list of places to call and their phone numbers that said that they could possibly consider it in this event. I think that's not unreasonable.
Oh, well, we, I mean, we have all those contacts. We just didn't put it into a plan and get, and make those calls now, but all of those calls would be made. There's a, you know, there's a network of, of people. That's what I tried to communicate, that we have a network. It, it, it's kind of like what would happen, you know, when I was talking to the mayor about this. It's kind of like what would happen if we had to vacate the, the, the city building and, you know, we, we would cobble something together. Some people would work from home. We might go out to public works. We might rent space suddenly at, you know, at Lincoln Square Mall. But, you know, you, you don't know exactly what the plan is, but you have your options. And, and we have all those contacts already. It's not that we would be starting from nothing. But it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to represent it to you as a plan.
Yeah, I think, as I was just wondering, just a tentative, you know, we know at least where to start, who to call. So thank you.
Absolutely do.
Any other comments? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
I'm sorry, I might be doing this out of order. Is there any way to amend it to say that there'll be a review subsequent, like with the, the task force? Maybe I should have brought that up in discussion. Sorry.
Yeah, no, not once the
Not once we're voting, no.
But that's something we can certainly do without it being codified.
Okay. All right. I guess we'll come back to it. So I'll say yes for now.
Okay. You want me to hold your vote till the end?
Uh, yeah, thank you.
All right. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
I'll say yes.
And what we can do is Lieutenant Bain can give periodic updates when there's something that the task force has to report. And in the meantime, if there are, if you're getting other suggestions from constituents, Leah Taylor, I believe, is, is she the chair of the task force? Leah, county board member Leah Taylor chairs the task force and you can either send your comments to Lieutenant Bain or directly to Leah Taylor. Okay. Thank you. Next up is Mary Alice.
All right. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of ordinance number 2021-05015. Ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for South Ridge Eight subdivision, Plan Case Number 2418 S21.
So second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Shandra. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes. And you're keeping us on our toes, fellas, because you're calling out a different order all the time. So thank you. Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right. Next up is ordinance, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval for ordinance number 2021-05016. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Three, Section Three hyphen forty-three, increasing the number of class R and T one liquor licenses for Sitara Indian Cuisine DBA Trace Nopalas at 114 South Ray Street in Urbana.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval for ordinance number 2021-05017. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Three, Section Three hyphen forty-three, increasing the number of class R and T two liquor licenses for CBOCS West Incorporated, otherwise known as Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, Number 29 at 2101 North Kenyon Road in Urbana.
A second.
What's the second?
Jayah.
Jayah, okay. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jayah. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wilkins?
Really changing it up. Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yeah.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, reports of special committees. I don't believe we have any reports of officers. I believe Sheila, Sheila shared what information she had about see you at home. I did want to let you know that we received notice mid-afternoon about the, the US Treasury released guidelines for, and the final allocations for the American Rescue Plan. On the latest list that we received, Urbana is scheduled to receive $12,974,560. And it will be in two tranches. So we get half in May of, half this year, half next year. Supposedly in May of 2021 and 2022. We have received guidelines. The entire document is about 151 pages of guidelines. There's a summary that the Illinois Municipal League has compiled that it was either sent out to council members tonight or will be first thing in the morning. But they outlined the general areas in which these funds can be spent, but the devil's in the details. So, so we will be studying those as the days go forward. And that, at this, that point, that's all we, you know, we have to share about that. But it's important now that we know the specific areas and some of these guidelines, we can start to make plans. But we have time. We have until May, December of 2024 to spend the money. And I know there's interest already from mayors to ask if, considering some cities are getting hundreds of millions of dollars, I think the request is going to be to at least give us the opportunity to obligate funds, if not spend every dime of it by that time, especially if you're doing infrastructure projects and everyone's competing for contractors and materials at the same time. It would be nice if, if we had the, a little more flexibility. But at any rate, those are the figures that we're working with. At least we have the guidelines and we can move forward from there. So. Uh, yes, Grace.
Thanks for the update. How will we decide distributing those funds?
We are going to be asking for your help. So, so this is not something that staff is going to decide internally. We are gonna have a process for getting input from council, from the community. And what we've done so far is developed some, I think, some guiding principles for, for use of the funds, including things like top priority should be, first of all, to replace revenue that we have lost due to COVID. We want to be able to account for the expenditures. We want, I personally think it's important to be able to, if we're going to commit to these things, we have to develop sustainability in whatever we do. So it's not just a one and done. And, and, and we need to be thoughtful about where we want to focus our efforts. So, so the, the federal government So, so the, the federal government has focused it to a certain extent. You know, they have broad categories of any things related to COVID nineteen, public health measures, um, offsetting negative economic impacts of the pandemic, replacing lost revenue. And in terms of infrastructure projects, they're focusing on water, sewer, and I believe it's storm sewer and sanitary sewer both, and broadband. So those are some of the broad areas that the money can be spent in. And then it's up to us to decide, you know, where we want to focus our efforts. Yeah.
Okay, one more. Um, is there an application or kind of like input process? I know this is very early on, but for the public, if there's, you know, an organization or an entity that's, you know, interested in some of these funds, is there an avenue in place? Or should they reach out to the city or wait for a designated time?
Wait, wait for the designated time. Yeah, we're, we're working on that. This is all coming at the same time that, as you know, we're moving from into a bridge phase and then into phase five. So there's going to be a whole lot of activity in the next month or two, just transitioning the city itself into phase five, which means opening up in-person meetings. Um, you know, there's a whole lot of stuff that's going to be happening over the next month or so, so. But, but we will keep, yeah, you'll be, you'll be notified absolutely when there are opportunities available. Thanks. Yeah, Jaya.
Just a quick question and totally understandable if you don't know yet. Um, is there any about supplanting funds with this money?
You broke up. Could you repeat your question?
Sorry. Yeah, if there's any, anything about supplanting, whether the money, if there are restrictions about supplanting other funding sources with this money, if you know that yet.
Don't know yet.
Okay.
Okay, stay tuned. This is going to be a very busy summer. Very busy. Um, let's see. And that's it for reports of officers. Any other, um, officers? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have one item, Resolution 2021 05 dash zero two two R, which was the resolution approving a redevelopment agreement with Frasca International, nine oh six Airport Road.
Yes, I'm bringing you tonight a proposed redevelopment agreement with Frasca International. Tom Frasca approached us about a new construction project they were doing at nine oh six Airport Road, or plan to do to build an eleven thousand five, uh, square foot simulator building. And, um, asking for TIFF assistance from TIFF four, which Frasca is located in TIFF four. Um, Frasca has, uh, manufactures a complete lineup simulator types of aircraft, including, uh, that's used in flight schools and military organizations worldwide. Frasca has been a significant, has had a significant impact on the community. And, um, they currently, or last I knew, employed a hundred and twenty-five people and had delivered over three thousand simulators to date. This project is expected to be completed in September of twenty twenty-one at a total estimated construction cost of one point six million. This agree, this proposed agreement would rebate fifty percent of the incremental property taxes generated by the project through the first two years following completion at a maximum, um, contribution of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the terms of this redevelopment agreement remain consistent with city guidelines, um, per similar redevelopment agreements that we've done in the past. If the full rebate, uh, were achieved, it would represent three point one percent of the total project cost or a public-private investment ratio of nearly thirty to one. Frasca has been a great community partner with us and, um, due to the positive fiscal impact, the prospect of generating additional economic activity, facilitating the growth of a thriving local business and past success of the developer, would lead staff to recommend approving this redevelopment agreement. And I am here if you have questions, and Tom Frasca would also like to address the council as he, uh, wanted to share some information too.
Go ahead, Mr. Frasca.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great, thank you. I'm a little technically challenged. I'm, uh, traveling today, so, uh, we gotta have had our, uh, issues along the way. So, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the council for considering, uh, Frasca International for the TIFF. As some of you may know, uh, we, our, our company was founded by my father in nineteen fifty-eight for the intention of developing flight training devices, flight simulators. And, uh, we, our factory is on the corner of Neil and Green for many, many years. In nineteen eighty, we bought the old Illini Airport, which is the airport we're currently on. That airport's been there since nineteen thirty-nine. So, uh, we were able to acquire some more land and we were able to expand it. Nineteen ninety, we moved our factory out there. And, you know, since inception of our company, we've put out three thousand flight training devices in seventy-plus countries. Our current, as of the first of the year, are, um, we've employed a hundred and forty. We have a hundred and forty and, uh, I'm sorry, one forty-three, and we've got nine openings positions open, so we're, we're hiring now. We need this, uh, this building, uh, for expansion and we're going into a larger flight simulator program. So, you know, it's, we're happy to be in Urbana. This is his home and we plan to be here. And we've got lots of, uh, roots in this area. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to help you, or if I can help you with any answers.
See, James had his hand up and then Mary Alice.
Yeah, my, my question was more, um, about the, the outcome. So, uh, if we, if we support this and it's, uh, a total of fifty thousand over two years in, um, that's coming against the, uh, property taxes that wouldn't otherwise be generated by this increase in, in value of the property. We're essentially, um, uh, funding, uh, funding, uh, I guess we're taking money out of the TIFF in the future to make this happen now, essentially, right? Because the TIFF is in place until twenty twenty-five. And this is the one that you said could be extended eventually?
Correct.
Still?
Yes, so we would be rebating them, uh, a portion of their increment or their future property taxes up to a maximum of, uh, fifty thousand dollars over the two years. And then that property will be on the tax rolls, uh, in perpetuity now. So through the remainder of TIFF and beyond.
But it's all, it's all inside the TIFF at this point, right? It's not a, another taxing body that's going to be harmed by this.
No.
It's, it's going to be all within the TIFF and it's called a rebate because it's in the TIFF as opposed to an abatement, which would have been in the enterprise zone. I'm just making sure I was paying attention earlier, right?
You are correct. They are both in the enterprise zone and a TIFF. So for the enterprise zone, they were able to take advantage of the sales tax exemption on building materials. So I've worked with Tom on that, but they can't get a property tax abatement from the enterprise zone because the TIFF supersedes that. That's why we're offering them a property tax rebate, reimbursement rebate, um, through TIFF. You are correct.
Okay, and if, if I understand, um, uh, the education that you've been giving us on TIFF, um, the but-for clause means that this investment won't happen unless we commit this fifty thousand dollars to it. Is that, is that what the but-for clause means? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mary Alice?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Frasca, for coming and for your family's long-term business in the area. Uh, you had mentioned that you have a hundred and forty-three employees and nine openings. Are you planning on filling, um, this new facility with your existing employees or do you have plans to hire more people?
Well, we're, we have nine openings now, which will be nine new positions. Um, this new, uh, let's say, um, to describe this building, we're building bigger, larger, and I'm talking with my hands, but you can't see it. We're building larger flight simulators now. So we will be, uh, we need a larger, uh, a larger building to put these flight simulators together. Same people, larger sim, larger simulators, bigger pieces, uh, stacked on top of each other. And these things move around. It's fifty-foot high. This thing is a tall building. It's fifty-foot high. So, um, we'll be, we, you know, we are investing in this. Where we had other options. We could have built this simulator in pieces and sent it to the customer and put it together there. That's been done. It's not, uh, not ideal, but it's been done. But we are investing in this, uh, to expand our business. So, you know, hopefully, can't make any promises, but we're not throwing money in, in the wind here not to grow. It's a very competitive market and business, so we're, we're really hoping to get more, continue to grow.
And are you able to recruit locally for employees or do you have to go out?
Yes, yes, we do. We have, uh, a lot, a lot of the U of I engineering students and, you know, Parkland. Oh, just, you know, we have to go, sometimes we have to go outside of the area for talent, but, um, if we can get everything we can locally, we want them here because we want them to stay. You know, we, we want these people, uh, we, we're a big family. The Frasca family is a big family. And, uh, we think of every one of our employees as a family member. And that's, that's on the Scott streets there. So.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll continue to grow.
Uh, Jaya, or, um, Grace, sorry.
Uh, thank you. Um, question for Tom Frasca. Um, he has this one point six million dollar project and this would be fifty thousands, up to fifty thousand rebate from TIFF over two years. And it looks like this project's already on your website and construction finishing up in September. Um, just.
We're ready to roll on this. We really want to go.
Yeah, so you're saying that if, um, without this fifty thousand coming out of one point six million up to, out of two years, it's not even guaranteed that you wouldn't be able to continue with this new construction?
No, I'd be lying to you if I said that. But we went into this hoping to get this tax.
Thank you.
This TIFF, so.
Another.
Answered your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you for your answer.
I mean, we've got, we've got to stay in business. This is part of it. And, you know, and business moves fast sometimes, especially in COVID. And, you know, um, the construction cost of this thing has really, really, uh, increased by about thirty-five percent over what our, our budget was.
And, um, question two about the previous redevelopment agreement, um, for Carol or whoever, um, is interested or knows, um, is, because it sounds like we're still waiting to see if the city needs to pay back the grant that was for that one point four, however many millions of dollars for Airport Road. Um, is it too late for Frasca to continue with their end of the bargain for that forty jobs or has that time window closed?
Um, I don't, I don't know if the time window has closed, but really, um, I think, given that the, the language of that agreement talks about, um, whether or not the, the goals of the agreement were met, given the prevailing economic conditions. I think this, this, um, this redevelopment agreement is part of a narrative. And, you know, one of the things when we met with Tom and some of his colleagues, um, uh, I don't know, I can't, I've lost track of when it was. It must, it might have been pre-COVID. I can't remember. Um, but we were talking, and when we were talking about, about the, um, the agreement about Airport Road, um, you know, this, this has turned into as much about, maybe less about growth and more about, uh, retention. And, um, when you, when, when we think about the, the, uh, the promise of those forty jobs, um, that was something that was very sort of tantalizing, but the retention of a hundred and forty jobs is even more important. And I, I don't know, Tom, if you want to talk a little bit about that, but that's the narrative that we hope to be able to convince the state about. And we think that this agreement, which is relatively modest, helps sort of express our commitment and Frasca's commitment to, to retention in this, in the state of Illinois and in this area. So, you know, for us, it's part of a narrative that we hope they'll entertain rather than looking strictly at the, you know, the, the metrics of what was expected back, you know, in twenty fifteen.
As far as, uh, did, did you want to hear from Frasca's side here? You know, business changes. We were expecting a growth spurt then and it didn't happen. Uh, but we are still here. Our lights are on. We're, we're doing business in, you know, several countries. We're, uh, we bring people in town. You know, we feed them at the restaurants. We house them at the hotels. We've got these hundred and forty plus, uh, which will be actually a hundred and fifty two employees here when we fill, fill all the positions. So we're here and, uh, we've been here in Champaign County since nineteen fifty-eight. We've got to do what we can do to, to, uh, stay in business and uh, unfortunately, we missed our number on that one.
Jaya?
So, again, I, I, Mr. Frasca, I appreciate you being here. Um, I know that we all appreciate, you know, the business being here in Urbana. I think for me, one thing I'm struggling is this agreement, does it supersede any previous agreements? And we didn't, like, I requested that, that, I got it this morning. Um, I just have some concerns of if we are saying that this is going to impact that previous agreement, that we haven't had time to look at it. So I think that that's just a piece that I'd like to hear more about, maybe from staff of, as we're being asked to make this decision.
Um, I, I think it's, uh, largely that, you know, there was a three-phase project that was anticipated. Um, and, uh, back in the original agreement, the twenty, I call it the twenty twelve slash twenty fifteen agreement because it was amended in twenty fifteen after we knew we were getting the EDP grant. And, um, only, I believe only phases one and two were completed. And, you know, and so there's, there's a, there's a hanging in the air element to it, right? Because phase three wasn't completed and, um, I don't know that there's any contemplation of that, but there's no sort of, because it wasn't completed, there's no, like, closure of it. And so, um, it's no endpoint of it. So this is just a way of, of putting a punctuation mark on the earlier agreement. And, but, you know, I, I do have to say, um, not to, not to be critical of any of my predecessors, but I think we have learned a few things about writing redevelopment agreements. Um, since, since some of these earlier ones, I know that, um, when we were doing the hotel, there were things that we incorporated in there that would, that were, um, you know, that gave finality to things that protected the city and, and, um, more completely. And so, uh, that, this is one way of just, you know, closing out the agreement cleanly, um, that we might have built into the agreement that in the, in the past that we just didn't.
Uh, James?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frasca, for being here. I didn't mention that earlier. Um, is, could you give us a, a ballpark on what you think, um, for those nine jobs that you're looking for, what the average salary is?
I'm not prepared for that, but I'll get you that information.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? We don't have a motion on the floor, do we?
I'll put a motion on for.
Okay.
All right, so I'll move approval of Resolution number twenty twenty-one zero five zero two two R, Resolution approving redevelopment agreement with Frasca International Incorporated at nine oh six Airport Road, Frasca International Incorporated.
A second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Okay, discussion. Mary Alice and Grace.
Uh, so I looked it up and the current fund balance is one point eight million dollars. Uh, at least according to the last paperwork. Um, so really fifty thousand dollars is, is not a lot to be contributing, in my opinion, based on the amount of money that's currently in this TIFF district. I think that it's been great that Mr. Frasca and his family have been doing business for so long in Urbana, really happy to retain the business. Um, so I'm in support of this agreement at this time.
Uh, Grace?
Oh, thanks. Thanks. Yes, I also appreciate this business being here and I have concerns and am not in favor of this redevelopment agreement because the last one didn't go well, didn't meet the targets. That way to save that exact amount of up to 50,000 would be to work on having that grant not have to be repaid to save Frasca 50,000, to save the city 1.4 million. I understand that might not have to do with this particular case, but our past agreements didn't go well and it seems like it would be a wash if they have to pay the city 50,000 and then we pay them 50,000 in TIF. I just, I don't really get it. It doesn't seem like this fits in the but-for clause for TIF since this is ongoing and I don't know that 50,000 out of 1.6 million is going to be a big difference. In our last week, Carol said this was a declining industry and that they were not likely to get jobs back up to where they were five years ago when we didn't meet the target on the last agreement. I think this TIF money is really important, particularly for TIF 4 in the Cunningham area. If we have $1.8 million in this TIF fund, I mean, that is from the property taxes of the people and businesses in that area. And I think that we need to use it responsibly. And when I think of all the things in that area that it could use, a new flight simulator is not the first thing that comes to mind. I understand that there's indirect benefits and I appreciate that. But when I look at especially the original TIF plans, the 2001 plan, I see Frasca was a part of that. And there was a lot of other things that were part of that that I don't know if they've been addressed yet and we're, seems like we're running out of time for this version of the TIF without expanding. And I would really like to see that go towards some more tangible things that directly benefit the people of that TIF area. And I think that's all I had to say about that. Thank you.
Any other comments? James?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to support this. I do hear what Grace is saying, but I actually think that the entering into this agreement will help with the narrative that was described earlier to avoid us having to pay back that grant. I think it's a small investment in a local business that has high-paying jobs. And to, to have a chance of avoiding that, that grant repayment. And if I understood correctly, that was work that the city wanted to do, it just happened sooner, so it, we would have been paying for that kind of investment in the longer term anyway, so I, I intend to support this.
Any other comments? Jay?
I, I will say transparently, I'm struggling with this because I do appreciate having local businesses who are so dedicated to our community, but based off of everything that's been shared with us about TIFs, this doesn't meet the requirements, so it doesn't meet the but-for clause. We're not hearing anything that says this development could not happen without this money. And as, as was stated, this could be something that would be used for, for businesses that cannot afford to build in that area otherwise, so. I guess that's just a still processing kind of where to go on this one because it doesn't seem to meet the requirements.
Any other come?
I guess I'll just clarify a little bit. We've been in discussion with Frasca on this development for over a year, going back and forth and them trying to decide if they were going to build in Urbana or elsewhere. And when this amount was proposed as a possibility or what we would take to council, that helped them make the decision to decide to build here. And then, of course, they had to go ahead and make their plans so they could start building on the schedule. COVID put a kink in a lot of things with the timing of this and all of that, so they, they had to make plans to move forward one way or the other. And that's where the but-for got them to decide to build in Urbana.
Any other thoughts? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Can you come back to me?
Okay. Ms. Wilkins?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Yes.
That's everybody, correct?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, last item on the agenda is election of the mayor pro tem. Each, each, after each election cycle, the city council needs to elect from among its members a mayor pro tem. Mayor pro tem serves as, in the absence of the mayor during a temporary absence, so that could be traveling for an extended period of time, disability, illness, something like that. And the, according to section 2-26 of the city code, it indicates that it's a temporary absence and incapacitates the mayor from the performance of their duties, but it does not create a vacancy in the office of the mayor. So the mayor pro tem would step in for a temporary period of time and then the mayor would resume duties after the, after they return from vacation, if one would be so lucky, or recover from their illness. Traditionally, and the Urbana City Council, the mayor pro tem has been the longest-serving city council member. And in that case, in this term anyway, that's Mary Alice Wu. So I'll entertain a motion for mayor pro tem. Sharice?
Yes, I would like to make the motion for the selection or, or appointment of Mary Alice Wu to be mayor pro tem in the absence of Mayor Diane Marlin.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Yes, Grace?
You just had some clarifying questions. I was wondering how long temporary is, if there's a timeline or it's just an expected return? And then kind of unrelated, but I think important, then what happens if there's that open office? Do we have like a full election, an appointment?
Temporary is not defined in Urbana city code. I know in the past when, and I haven't actually utilized it. I think I utilized it once when I went to the US Conference of Mayors meeting two years ago. And at that point, Dennis Roberts stepped in as mayor pro tem. So there's no, there's no, it's not defined in city code, but typically it's if the mayor is traveling. And I believe in the past has also been related to when the mayor had, was out with an illness. But basically, if, if you can't do your daily duties, then the mayor pro tem can step in. In the case of a vacancy in the office, that means that the office has been vacated, so. That, that's, that's a more serious situation. And that all, and so how that bill is filled depends on when that vacancy occurs. It either is filled with a, the council electing from among the remaining, the council members and acting mayor, or it is left vacant and assumed that the mayor pro tem serves until the next regular municipal election. But whether the, what, which one of those two choices is made is depend, depends on how much, how long the term, how much of the term is left. And that is outlined in the Illinois compiled statutes. It's not actually in our city code. And I can send you the actual reference from the statute if you want to see the language. Shandra?
So does the pro tem term last as long as the council term?
Yes.
Is it yearly? Okay.
Well, it's last, it lasts for that four-year period.
He's just comment that I appreciate, Mary Alice being willing to do that. It sounds like a big responsibility, especially if it were a longer-term thing, which hopefully wouldn't be. But yeah, I appreciate your willingness to step into that position because I know I'm not in any position to drop everything and be the mayor. I appreciate that responsibility to take on.
And I tend to stay alive and healthy to the best of my ability. Okay, any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion passes. Congratulations, Mary Alice.
Stay alive.
Thanks. And I will point out and our, our code does, does go into detail on this. If both the mayor and the mayor pro tem are temporarily absent or incapacitated for purposes of authority to respond to emergency matters, the office of mayor pro tem devolves upon the person then holding the office of alderperson of the first ward, which happens to be Mary Alice Wu. That would then devolve upon the person who's holding office of the second ward. So you're up, Christopher Evans. And so forth through the persons then holding office of alderperson for each of the wards in numerical order until an alderperson who is not absent or incapacitated is located to perform the duties of mayor pro tem. So we have a mayor pro tem and six backups.
I don't have to worry about it.
It sounds like a band.
Well, you know what?
Mayor pro tem and the six backups.
I used to say, don't worry about anything, but you know, given 2020, anything's possible, so, including us forming a band at some point. All right, with no further business before this council, we are adjourned. Thank you.